Okay. Yeah, it's similar. How do you like the hard case? I like the hard cases more than the...
I like it.
I have 59.
Look at their end line.
Let you know what.
I think it's...
Yes, Gerald.
Well, let me know.
I missed him.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, mine's pulled down.
I do a little bit of...
They said they wanted to get on 76 and go to 11.
Take 11 down to 30. Take 30.
Oh, yeah.
Take 30 across and drive it all the way back to 77, 71. Come back.
Okay. Okay, 7 o'clock. We'll bring this meeting to order. The Brimfield Township Zoning Commission. Okay. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ron Jones.
Here.
Tom Johnson.
Here.
Debbie Darless.
Here.
Tom Sargent.
Here.
Patrick Blair.
Here.
Seth Halen. And Colette Willows.
Here.
All right, thank you. Does... May I have a motion to accept the agenda, please?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor, signify.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next thing on the agenda here is approval of minutes for September the 9th, October the 14th, and November the 11th. Now, am I supposed to pass these and everybody sign them back?
Yeah, just if everyone can sign those before they leave. But everyone got a copy in their mail.
Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes? You think? Anybody want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from September 9th. Do you want to do each one separate?
Yeah, do... Just do the whole thing at one time.
Okay. September 9th, October 14th, and November 11th.
Thank you. Second, please. Second, please. There being no second, we will wait until...
I'll second.
Okay.
Me with Ron talking Greek.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. Yeah, if you don't understand, you know, I just... Okay. We have a proposed district change discussion. I guess before we get this far, did the trustees get to the... To the last one for... Sorry, Helms?
So, there's a public hearing tomorrow at 8 o'clock.
Eight.
For 15 minutes or half hour, whatever we need tomorrow morning. I don't anticipate anybody. Nobody showed up for the last one, so I don't anticipate anybody. And we don't have any correspondence. And then I would imagine the trustees will vote on it at the next meeting. What is that, 15?
All right. So, I'm going to let... I'm going to turn this over to you, Mike, and...
Yeah. So, what you have here is our... It's the hand drawing that we worked on last meeting. I just made copies of everything. We had some people in here, the property owners that were up and down 43, and they had... And we tried to accommodate them in this as well. The thing that I would do from this point on, since this is a work in progress and there's no rush to vote on anything or anything like that, is I would request that you guys make a motion to send to Regional Planning to get different style of mapping and all the parcel numbers and everything, all-inclusive mapping, that they could come here and we could discuss with them and see if some of the zoning that we discussed, like going to R3 in some of these areas or, you know, highway commercial or R4 or anything, makes sense from their standpoint and continue the work in progress and get them involved with our mapping.
It's regional? Okay.
Before we make any decisions or anything like that, I'd like to get their advice and have them work with us on it.
All righty. You want to just... A motion then to send it back to them?
To Regional Planning, yeah.
On some of these that you have highlighted here as R3?
Yeah.
Looking at the southern portion of that where it joins the HC, that's... Is that Brimfield Road?
Yeah, Brimfield Drive.
Those are already pretty much developed as residential, aren't they?
They're all... Yeah, those are all residential.
And they have homes and structure on that. We haven't gotten any...
Yes, they're homes. And that's why we've been trying to update the not conforming use areas.
Right.
To... Like, you know, the apartments we just did. With financing again.
Right.
You know, we're trying to make these areas what it is, you know? Call it... You know, if it's residential, it's called residential, you know? Some wetlands in there. And they're looking at zoning changes, too. I'd like to just accommodate everything at once while we're going down 43 and hear everybody out. If it doesn't... Something that this board doesn't want to do, then we won't do it. But at least we'll hear them out at this point. And if it makes sense, then you can go for it. But I think the whole thing is, is to work back and forth with... We'll get Regional involved and get their feedback to what we decide, too, as well. That way, we're not making any quick decisions and...
What the university's property... I know it comes down Malloy Road.
Mm-hmm. There's an access point right here where the... On 43, behind those homes, looks up and...
I'm trying to think of what the road would... The road that there dead ends by the...
Malloy?
Sherman?
Sherman?
No, it would be... Doesn't have... I think it has maybe one house on it right there, the corner of...
Oh, yeah.
What was that?
It was over to...
Edson Road.
Oh, okay.
And it's just down a little bit around that corner.
Mm-hmm.
I can't think of it.
I think it's an R1 there.
That would be...
It's off of Malloy and connects to 261.
Yeah. I don't see it here. I don't think they even have it.
That's on it? Is it what?
Burnett. That's what it is.
Burnett dead end. Burnett dead end, so...
Yeah, dead end. Is that Kent State land to the left or to the western Burnett?
I think so.
And from what I remember, yeah. Okay.
He's got quite a bit of acreage in there, but most of it's wet. So, they want to do some zoning changes just to accommodate what they can build in the area. And that makes sense based off of soil conditions. What can you build on it, you know? I wouldn't be opposed to hearing them, at least at this level.
Yeah, there's... Try to be with an R1. No. Yeah, it would be R1, I think.
R1, I think, yeah.
An R2 would be through that.
And I know Regional had some thought process up off of 261, you know, getting some LI areas up in there, too. So, that's why I'd like to get their feedback, you know, off of what we're doing here.
Well, my understanding on those properties was the city of Kent was engaged with the Ohio Department of Transportation to grant access to 261. And I think without that, you have permission to access 261. And there was also some discussion, my understanding, to take 261 from two lanes or four lanes down to two.
Yeah.
And I haven't heard anything. That's been about a year ago.
Yeah. Usually that's not the case. Usually everybody's begging for more lanes, so...
Yeah, I thought they would go out one of the...
West of that other turn...
West of 43 on 261 there. I thought they wanted to reduce that four-lane section to down to two-lane section and have more access for commercial.
I haven't heard anything about that.
There was one thing they talked about.
That was about four years ago.
Yeah.
I mean, we've got all the projects up online interactively from ODOT right now. That's not one of them that I see. So, if you go to our comprehensive land use plan online, which... You know, I was talking to this gentleman and he'll probably address the board, too, as well, because he owns some property here. But the 2050 land use... Remember, we're going to update annually. So, like, right now in front of you, not to change the subject, but we got the census back. Some people don't agree with the census, and we're trying to look at numbers. I mean, it is what it is. It's saying your population is 11,352. We had a lot of calculations from Mezner in the past and Wendy? Wendy and Mezner? There was a bunch. They were showing, you know, close to 15,000. But we just don't... You know, the population... The census doesn't say that, so... I'm not going to argue with them. I mean, I don't know what to argue with, so it is what it is.
So, what date is this based off of?
This is the census that just came out. 2020 United States Census.
Census from last year?
I think a lot of people don't answer that.
It could be, but even then, they still asked...
I worked for the Census Bureau during that census. I'm going to tell you. I had... While kicking the doors in on shacks, they counted everything. And if they didn't answer, there was follow-up teams that went back if you got no answer from the location. And then if that didn't work this spring, they said, "We're not good here." They're less than what we've talked about for years. But I think the most accurate count that you're going to get...
Well, and you know, all of our funding is based off of this, both for the schools and for our roads.
Right. So, there's an incentive to overstate what you have.
Yeah.
But this is from a federal census, and I was part of it. And I'm going to tell you...
That's what I say. I feel pretty accurate. I agree with you. I feel comfortable with it. I mean, I know there's not much we're going to be able to do, you know, to change the United States. I don't think we have any more accurate counts than that, so... And you know, it makes sense. We're looking at... They were saying we built 700 homes in that time. And then they're averaging like two, two and a half per dwelling unit on average. And it says we increased 1,400. That makes sense. I'm like, okay, that kind of makes sense. But we'll see. I mean, we're going to... We'll pull what we can. I know that Lauren looked into regional planning and was getting like our housing count from the auditors and just trying to double-check, make sure we were still good. Everything looks fine. So, so far. But there's some... There are some things as we go into this in the census, and we could send you guys a link or you could Google it yourself with our... But there was something... There was 250 vacant homes. I'm not going to find out what that's about. That's a lot.
There was quite a few.
That's a lot.
Quite a few.
And I know that we have some people... You know, we're knocking down the ones that we can. I'm getting search warrants on the obvious ones, but I'd sure like to dig in and find out where the rest are, so... But yeah, we have a... We have quite a few.
We had quite a few that were farm or agricultural buildings. And there'd be vehicles parked in a driveway. And when you dig into it, the parents lived there, they died. The kids still farm the place, and it looks like somebody's living here.
I see.
We had quite a few of those. There's some homes right out here on 18 that were empty. Nobody was living in them. Right off... Right over by...
Congress Lake?
Well, there was some car over that way. It was quite a few. There was quite... I was surprised because I had to take a follow-up team back out to try to, you know, verify whether there's actual living people there. And of course, the Census Bureau doesn't believe you, so they got to go back three and four times to find out. If you don't get an answer from the door, you got to go talk to the neighbors. And some of these people aren't very friendly, so... It was a challenge. But yeah, I think the data's pretty accurate. So, down here on the bottom of this map, to get back to the question we're seeing, you've got highway commercial that's primarily residential area right now, with the exception of hotels. Highway commercial properties because they're all rental income properties.
No, and we could take a look at that. That might... It might be better, and that's why I'd like to get Regional in there. We just threw something in. You have the hotels in there as well as you have apartments. They could wait back.
A lot of apartments, yeah.
A lot of apartments. And maybe we go to IC instead, integrated commercial, to fit those apartments. But all I would like to do is make the zoning fit those specific areas. We could put a question mark, you know, to Regional and everybody mark it down and say, you know, should this be IC? Because all I'm trying to do is call the areas what they should rightfully be, you know? I don't like the wish list, you know? Like, oh, I hope all this turns into general commercial or something. It's not working, you know, so... Rather, for that all...
We'll send this to Regional. And at some point, all these property owners are going to be sent a letter?
No.
We're not going to do it that way?
No. I... Well, I... That's not the way the law is written.
Right.
But I would like... I would prefer that we at least by regular mail address everybody somehow.
With five, five or more, less?
We don't have to. We just post them in the paper, but the circulation's not that great.
Right.
I... We're going to get a lot more off of Facebook. So, I will. I mean, not that we're required to do that, but when the time comes, I'm going to ask the trustees to be able to send it out at least regular mail and then post it on Facebook and whatever else social media's we have, just so that everybody's aware and we're not like shocking people that were changing their zoning. As much as we can publicize it, I'd like to do it because I don't want... I don't want to make a year from now saying, "Oh, I didn't know this changed." You know, and that happens. That's what we don't want. We're not... We don't want to hide nothing. We want to make sure everybody's aware of what's going on.
So, what's... What the refreshes, since it's been a while? Can you stay what the law tells us about notification?
Yeah, so I think it's a... I think it's over five or more. I have my book in front of me. I believe it's five or more or 10 or more parcels.
I thought it was 10 or more parcels.
So, let's go with 10 or more parcels than you have to advertise in the paper. You don't have to send out.
I think we want it less, but I think it was 10.
But I don't think it's going to be a big deal to mail out regular mail. It's not going to...
So, the higher revise code says 10. Am I right? So, you have to comply as a minimum, or are you...
We could always go... You could always go above and beyond to notify. I feel more comfortable. You know, if we send certified, it obviously costs us money. But if we send regular mail and we get a response back from that... Because I tell you, most people don't pick up their certified. We send our violations out, and 90% of them ignore it. They won't pick up. Put it on the website, put it on Facebook. We'll say it at our meetings nonstop. We'll hold all our regular meetings, the public hearings, everything else that we have.
Well, we probably... Ron, we had a product that is over, identify the parcels.
That's what I'd like to do. That's why I'd like to send it over to Regional and then at least start the conversation. It might be two or three months before we sit down with Regional and narrow down what you want to do, but it's a good start.
You think changing the zoning would help motivate the county for sewer water on the structural line?
I think that the Kent State property is going to make a big difference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because they... Kent, it's not the county, but Kent themselves has guaranteed one of our developers looking at that property that they'll bring water to them. And if we get that, then we can pretty much access water anywhere. You know what I mean? Like, it moves it up 43.
It'd be on the south side.
It's a very good sign.
Be on the south side of 261.
Yeah, that's going to take from 261 all the way up to Petites Gardens Center there. That's all going to be in that parcel.
Which is nice.
And that goes all the way down to... Whatever that road is.
Burnett?
No, it's not Burnett. Burnett goes off of Malloy and dead end.
261.
Back there. I can't think what the name of it is right offhand. It's only got one house on the corner and the radio station at the other end.
Yeah.
On the... It's not Midway Drive.
No. And I think it goes all the way across to the...
I know what you're talking about. It's a second.
Yeah.
I know exactly where you're at.
I always go that way for a shortcut over to the east side of Kent. Can't think of it.
Well, you need a motion to...
Please.
I need a motion to send it over to Regional.
I'll make a motion to send, what would you call this?
Preliminary.
Preliminary rezoning property along State Route 43 and Brimfield Drive to Regional Planning.
Yeah, they'll reassess everything.
Yep.
Okay, could I have a second?
I have a second, the motion.
Your second, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor, signify?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Can we put the names of the companies on there?
Well, that's what we're going to do. We're going to get the parcels. We'll get the names of everything. And then there'll be blown up maps. And then we... Then we can have... You know, like I said, I'm not in a rush. So, if it takes us two or three months to sit and discuss it and then start the process, which would be public hearings and public meetings, I'd just rather take our time and do it right.
All righty. Sir, do you like an address, please?
My name's Frank Arthur. The address that I'm talking about or my home address?
Your mailing address.
My mailing address is 2014 Wilkshire, ILTSHIREE Road, Akron, Ohio 44313. And my reason for being here is, which was resolved by Mr. Ladd graciously, that the Regional Planning... Apparently, the Regional Planning Commission, the 50-year report for land use effective 2050, split by farm in half. And it's 30 acres on the Orange Power Road and 43. Darn, this is crazy.
Is that on the north side or south side?
It's west, south, south.
South side? So, you're the fellow with the cows? It's this... Cows and...
No, no, no. There's two used car lots.
Oh, yeah.
Which leads me to the next...
Okay.
Ron, you have the parcels in front of you, too. I printed them all out. They should be in here, underneath here. Yeah.
Which... And then... So, my main first purpose for being here was resolved by Mr. Ladd. So, not to waste your time further, but I, as an aside, I said, you know, there's two used car lots on Farm that were generically established by the man. And immediately to the south, it's zoned highway commercial as opposed to general commercial. Not only are there two existing used car lots, but one of the used car lots is doing reasonably well, and it spawned another used car lot, crossroad car connection, which located immediately down the street and cross, basically across from... Well, not quite across from, but in the same location. And now they have three locations. So, it seemed to me that it would make sense since these... They've kind of changed things as far as these existing car lots go.
Right.
But since immediately adjacent to the south, it's zoned highway commercial. But since immediately adjacent to the south, it's zoned highway commercial. It seemed to me that it would make sense to continue highway commercial down to Howell Road well, down to Howell Road on the west-hand side. And I was asking Mr. Ladd about that and he said, well, this is zoning commission, so even though you haven't filed anything formally, this is just kind of happens since being here. He said, now's actually as to to what extent the zoning or permission might, might consider it they will direct to me as to what else you require me in order to pursue this. There's nothing eminent and I don't have any vital plans at this moment or it's, it's not like there's an immediate need for anything. But then, just going one step further, on the immediate adjacent corner pointing north, there's that Tri- Tri-County, yeah. Bay lease, budget truck leasing. I mean, it's, it's kind of in, in the same realm. Used cars. And then there's, there's a mechanical shop, what is it? NAPX Collision Shop, I think, across the street, right in, right in the same area. And across the street on the what would that be? The east-hand side of State Route 43. Part of that is already zoned highway commercial. So anyway, I would, I would respectfully suggest to the board that, that it would at least be worthwhile considering changing the zoning for the land between what's already zoned highway commercial and Howell Road. At least on the west-hand side of 43 to highway commercial.
Well, this is, that's part of the reason we're sending this back over to.
I'm, I'm a little bit confused here looking at the map. Isn't it all general commercial? We don't go that far north on is this area right here? Is this general?
This is, this is basically, it's not that line, but this and this.
A corner here because you have a, a lot more bad used car lot here and there's one, I think, right here. And this is all currently even a general commercial.
It is.
I didn't see any highway commercial that far.
No, no, it's not. It was grandfathered down.
As highway commercial?
And that wouldn't be a bad idea considering me saying there's used car lots there. It's not a bad idea to propose to, to Regional to make this corner highway commercial. And then we've got, then we've got some things that actually conform to the code.
So you're saying going all the way up to Howell Road, changing things?
All this.
This parcel here, which is, do you know how many acres that is?
This was twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
And then this was eight.
Eight.
And this was four.
Four. And where, the power lines have come? Car line, we, we have a couple of points of access, one on forty-five. And then, then the four acre lot on Howell Road that would have.
Well, there's sixty feet.
Sixty feet right away.
I'm not so sure. G C right workers ago, was there a a reason on that or?
I don't, I really don't recall.
Because I, I don't think, you, you can almost go to Howell Road with.
And I, zoning person or, or, it's just the secretary, but I said something about that, commented on that. And the, the response was something to the effect, something about, well, Clayman was here. And, and my, my memory is a little bit faulty. But the sense I got or the suggestion I got, and this is totally hearsay over the bone and I can't even tell you. But it was, it was, Clayman was concerned with Clayman Auto Mile, that he didn't want.
Yeah, that was, that was a big thing back then too.
But what, was that a rumor back then?
It was just rumors.
Yeah, well, okay, that's.
I think there's no such as that comment. I, I think at that time, we were trying to keep that whole corridor, you know, actually from, from the interstate. Well, the AC with the hotels and everything were at.
Right.
We, we wanted to keep everything to the kept, to the kept border as general commercial. Because, well, that's where we wanted to hold everything to go at that time, you know? It hasn't worked that way because of sewer and water. But that was for the last twenty years. That's been the consensus, the general idea, that we wanted to keep that whole, you know, corridor as general commercial. I'm, that would be.
I, I do know that, and I don't mean to interrupt you by any, I'm sorry, but I know that the trustees have said we don't want more hotels. So I know that's a big concern. I thought maybe that was something that, that, you know.
No, the only place we didn't want another hotel was Tom, Monodore Road and Talmadge Road. And that didn't work out too well.
We're having, we're having a lot of issues with some of our hotels. I haven't seen names, but some of them that the things, money's not coming in right. We're overdoses and for a while there was weekly in some of our hotels and we just have a lot of calls. It's, it's become a huge burden for the township.
That's, seems like it's been that way for a long time.
Yeah, in fact, the judges that were coming around was, were telling us that our hotels were the biggest sex traffickers. You know, they're like, there's a huge drop for human trafficking here. Between that and that.
Couple of, couple of bad.
I don't know how true that is, but that was a lot of what those judges were coming around talking about.
A lot of drug, a lot of drug activities. Two of them in particular. Fire department were having daily alarm drops out there because of people in there smoking pot.
We're starting to charge, yeah, we have fines now and we have charging come down.
So I, you know, I don't, and vet taxes, I think there's a couple of them.
Negative, negative, you're not paying, right? They have somewhere paying. They're, they're collecting the tax, they're just not turning it over to us. We have to provide services.
Right.
Rewatering. Yeah, so I think we're gonna see a big, big thing come up in the future, the next year or so with the, with the trustees trying to pursue what we're gonna do with those.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's gonna be a concern if you, if you can take the highway. That is gonna be a huge concern. It might not pass at the trustee level. You can pass a year, but the trustees might not pass that highway commercial.
That, let me ask, on those three particular parcels, how close are you to water and sewer?
I have sewer. I put sewer in two sewer projects on the rear, you know, not in the front.
On Howell? Would be accessed?
Yeah, they, they cut into Howell Road. It's, it's Portage County Sewer, what the first one.
Do you have an overlay of the sewer?
Not with.
No, okay. We can, we can.
Well, the county, the county, yes, the county has.
Where do they come from? What do they keep down the Pleasant, Pleasant Lakes? Is that where they keep up in Pleasant Lakes or what?
No, I cut in on Howell Road. The first one, what happened was on the corner property, the septic system went. And I thought to myself, well, I would replace the septic system or put in sewer. So the sewer goes from the corner on Howell Road to the rear of the next two houses. Jackson's and I don't know the other lady's name. And then it cuts over to, to Howell Road. That was, that was the first sewer.
I'm just trying to figure, put in my mind where, where the connection was from the county line.
It, it's on Howell Road or on. Yeah, they didn't, they didn't.
Trying to place where the main connection.
That's what I was, I was wondering where.
Yeah, it came up from side front on the corner there, which is, which is Kent, Kent.
Coming down by our door?
Yeah.
Looking at where it is.
Well, then, then the sewer or the septic system went from what's, I think, the second used car lot further up, a little bit south. That septic system went.
Right.
And so then, then I replaced that with a sewer to the rear that cut into the first sewer.
Okay.
So there's very limited, but there's sewer. And I got three sewer builds for the ten.
At the current time, you're farming a portion of that?
Can't imagine anybody, fifteen acres of soybeans and kind of weed revolves the crop periodically.
I was curious, without breaking the book open, studying general commercials, a highway commercial. The difference zoning, I think it's only minor of what you can.
Hotels and gas stations.
Hotels and gas stations.
Well, it's the car lots.
Car lots. But, you know, the, keeping my IC allows for car lots as well. So we just had this question come in and I'm looking at Integrated Commercial. It's not listed in the zone, but if you look at the guidelines of where car lots are approved, additionally approved and IC now. Which is, I think there was cheap, there was only, I think it was HC and IC.
Yeah, that was the other two.
Conditionally approved.
Okay, well, before we address that, then you think we should send this over to Regional and then come back to.
Yeah, I think you guys work through it. You know, with all this stuff they brought up, we should bring it up to Regional. And they have the conversation here.
Yes.
Well, I think that on the regional maps they send back, I'd like to see the sewer lines for this one.
We can see everything. They'll be parcel numbers, they'll put businesses on it. They'll have the, the water and the sewer on it and then we can make it more detailed.
Because I, we've, we've talked out of the oven years about sewer lines in that area. And it was always the county, the county and the city at Kent at the time. No way. You can't have sewers down there.
There's sewer across the street for that facility that.
Was, in regards to septic systems, they kind of earlier trying to move everybody to a sewer lot. Wasn't listing law, if you're within two hundred feet of a sewer line, you have to attach.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure what the.
Yeah.
Is it two hundred feet?
Well, I'm not sure that.
The distance?
I know. Those sewers were available to a couple of houses that now we've attached.
I'm sure the health department will get around looking at that sometime in the future. Because I do know there were several residents that were compelled to tap into sewer lines. And then after they, they just modified their septic system and made some compliance. Is that, that might be a way to, to kind of get the sewer, get compliance down forty-three and then you get the, the sewer line at least.
Yeah, I thought when the, when the gold pro, well, that piece of property, he was gonna put a, a golf school and all that in there.
Yeah.
Because I would.
That would have been nice.
Step things up a little bit, you know?
He stole most of the property. We just had to, he just took the house down.
Yeah. He is with the, with that profit. It's like everybody else waiting to see what's, what's gonna happen to sewer water.
I think, yeah, like I said, I think the Kent State property is gonna be key of this. Who goes to, whether it sits for a while or it's gonna, everything's gonna pop down forty-three if that water comes.
Well, with the Jersey home of the.
Yeah, they brought water to the nursing home.
So, you know, might keep it coming down. Okay. So we're gonna send this to Regional. And with the information that we just discussed here this evening about that piece of property. And probably we'll get it back possibly for next month's meeting?
Yeah, we'll send it to, and, you know, if they can get the maps to us. I, I don't see any problem. We've been working with Gail. She's been really good with that, so.
Yeah, and it's well in advance, so I don't see why we shouldn't be able to get that done.
Okay. Is that okay?
No, I'm, I'm delighted.
Okay.
Because that, that was just an afterthought, so.
No, I, 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 I think it'd be a great idea to continue that on down there. That could attract more, you know, more highway residents down through there other than more hometowns.
More hotels and guest.
Maybe, maybe that, maybe, maybe it, or, or maybe you come back and you, and you deal with, you know, Regional, they say IC. Still, the car lots will still be, that, that would make them fall in play with it, but then you wouldn't get the.
Yeah, with car lots, you need guest.
You do? Yes.
Well, I, I can just take cases now.
My.
Yeah.
That's a state.
Recharge it.
The other problem with the hotels, from my perspective, from a lot of the people I know, is the hotel collect the vet tax and that supposedly shared with everybody in Portage County. But Bridgeville is the one that generates it. We're the ones, the police and the fire department, we take care of it. And then we send that money out to Georgetown, lobby of the, of Portage County and Kent. So.
I don't think.
There are hotels if they wanna tax.
I don't think any of them do that. That's like speech control, the whole deal. When they start putting their hotels in there, it was, it was the same way. They just pulled out the whole, the whole Portage County. None of their money goes to anywhere other than Streetsboro.
And you run their way to mention.
Well, cities can do that. And, you know, and it's honest, because, you know, we had the police levy up, the piece of police levy did not pass. Open, I think, you know, this next time it does. But the amount of calls that the police have to go there for overdoses and the amount of policemen we have, just for that simple fact, it's a good reason why you don't wanna create more headaches for us when we don't have the personnel to keep going down.
Yeah, so our friend, who was actually a family member on the, who was on the drug test for a year. And he said that seventy-six thoroughfare is the main route for the drugs. And it all depends on the cost of the drugs. So when the, like, when we had all the meth labs, all the meth labs.
Yeah.
So when the drugs went up high, all the meth labs pop up. And then when the drugs are cheap, then it's the main thoroughfare comes through and then, then it, because he knew those hotels.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm hearing it more frequent, you know, it's.
Yeah.
The only, the only thing I think stops it is, is bigger than hotels.
Right. We don't have, I know, I know some of the big ones that we have, they're, they're very, very nice. We don't have a simulation, so.
Yeah, I, not mentioning any hotel bands.
Like, I mean, it's class.
Hotel motel on over there. They've always had problems with prostitution and, and drugs.
Yeah, I think there's still issues.
Yeah, I don't know how it is now. You know, you can usually tell some of these hotels that the, the, more they get run down and everything, the more headaches you have with them. And my sandwich really was beautiful place. And then it went downhill so fast, it must have been funny. The house on the apartment, we were calling people out of there, out of both of them, left and right, you know? Okay, next meeting?
January fourteenth.
January the fourteenth. Well, thank you, gentlemen.
January fourteenth is a Friday. It's January thirteenth.
Are you in relation to, to Jim or Bill?
Yeah. That was Jones, my brother.
Bill was your dad? Bill was your dad?
Bill Archer, yeah. But he was, he died in nineteen eighty-five.
I, I did a lot of stuff.
That's all right.
In fact, the, back in the seventies, I did a lot of stuff with Bill.
It's the only first time in the year we've ever won.
Yeah, he owned a lot of stuff down. He was, he was, he was quite a, old Scot. Yeah, I sold real estate for her responsibility.
Is, is there?
Yeah, it's right down the street. He was, he was quite a guy.
I can't say one out of seven. He, he reached out, you're, he still can reach out to a lot of them.
Take care.
And they're all like a down low in fact. Because I, either lower the price.
Yes, yes. Adjourn the meeting?
They do.
I'll make our motion to adjourn the meeting. Meeting is adjourned.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.